Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atomo City Council meeting. Before we get started, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Before we start our regularly scheduled Atomo City Council meeting, we are going to have an Atomo Board of Health meeting, so I'll go ahead and have Chris take the roll call, and I'll call the Atomo Board of Health meeting to order.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number 10 on December 6, 2022, as presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 530 West Woodland in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Zach, you're going to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. The structure at 530 West Woodland was placarded September 9 of last year due to a house fire. The house has been open to the elements during the duration of the file. No progress has been made. The house continues to deteriorate, and no repair plan has been filed. We've also received complaints about grass at the property. There's, like I said, no repair plan on file. Condemnation notice was served by certified mail and posting in the courier and on the property.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions that they'd like to ask? If not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 530 West Woodland. Order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs to tend to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 530 West Woodland.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Since there's no other business to take care of for the Board of Health meeting, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Okay, we will go ahead and move forward with our regular Atomo City Council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I do have a quick question about the consent agenda before we move to vote.
Okay.
Just item number two, acknowledgment of March and April financial reports and payment of bills as submitted. I'm just clarifying, and is this, oh, and I've lost my train of thought, is this just, what's the word, when it's balanced? I can't think of it.
Reconciled?
Reconciled. Are these the reconciled or just showing what we've paid for the last couple months of March and April?
Those would be what we paid for the last month.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, so Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is approval of tonight's council agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's council meeting?
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is city administrators' report to council and the citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So just a moment ago, there were three appointees for the Human Rights Commission that were approved to extend their term. They were initially a one-year term, and they'll be now a three-year going forward here. And so that was Amy Norris Hernandez, Galen Davis, and Nathan Wilson. They'll be continuing on. And with us tonight, we have three other members of the Human Rights Commission that I've asked to come forward and...
Galen's here.
Oh, hey, Galen showed up too. All right, Galen. Sorry, I didn't see you sneak in. So four members, John Fenner, Jaclyn Pope, Connie Johnson, and Galen Davis, are here to represent the Human Rights Commission, provide a brief update of the work that we've been doing over the last year, and answer any questions that you may have at this time for where we're headed and what's going on. So I'll invite the four of you to come to the podium and be recognized.
I'm John Fenner. I'm a member of this group, and we are a group, all of us, we stand together. There's a few of us missing, but the purpose of this is to increase awareness, understanding, and appreciation of diversity, equity, and exclusion within the community, and to proclaim a public policy of nondiscrimination by securing freedom from discriminatory practices based on a person's race, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, nation, national origin, religion, or disability as defined by ICA. We're protecting individual dignity, ensuring their full productive capacities, preserving the public safety, health, and general welfare, and promoting the interests, rights, and privileges of individual citizens within the cities. Our duties are to listen to the community, connect and listen with the community concerns, connect the citizen with Iowa Civil Rights Commission when needed, recommend policies and programs to implement human rights goals in the community, provide educational opportunities to the community, collect, report data, and report it on a biannual basis, promote human rights, celebrate diversity.
One thing that we did, I'm a co-leader for the ACLU of Iowa for Wapalo County, and I invited, or we invited, one of the people who works for the ACLU of Iowa to for training and about civil rights, human rights, and the services that they can provide to the citizens of Iowa. And I believe it was interesting for a lot of people, they didn't realize all the services that are available to them. I'm Connie Johnson.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Pope, and I just wanted to share a little bit of this experience that's been going on for the last year, human rights. I wasn't really sure what I was getting into, and we're building this from the ground up, and it's been amazing. We have an amazing team, and we've taken our time, and we've written our mission statement. We all understand our purpose and most of all, our limitations, and we understand that our purpose here is to be visible, to help, and we started off, we kind of kicked it off yesterday at the Juneteenth Festival, and it felt really good. So I just wanted to share that that's where I am at this point, a really hard-working team that I'm proud to be part of. So we just, is there any questions from the group that you wanted to ask us? Or we've given you the brochure that talks about the things that we have, our mission and purpose and so forth, and like I said, we kicked off our first event yesterday, and I hear we have four more this summer. And it was, it was a really good, warm, friendly crowd. I loved every minute of it. It was long, and oh my God, was it hot. But, yeah, but it was beautiful, so.
Jackie, I think it'd be really good, too, to talk a little bit about when you guys meet every month, because they are open meetings to the public, so the public can come to the Atomo Human Rights Commission meetings.
So our meetings are on Monday, and Rick, I have to get myself...
The second Monday.
Okay, the second Monday at 5:30.
At 5:30.
Yes. We have very good attendance, and I'm happy for this group that, you know, when you're building from the ground up, that's a little scary, and it's a little hard, but what we have is buy-in, and buy-in is everything. We all feel like we're on the same page, so it's a good thing. Y'all don't have any questions? The police department showed up and made amazing balloons and stuff I've never seen before, okay? All right, so.
Yeah. Do you guys have someone that represents the youth, or is that something totally different?
So, oh, sorry. Actually, we just talked about that at our last meeting, and it's my fault that it's not on the council agenda today, because I had some wording I was going to send to Phil. However, when we met, I forgot to ask about term length for youth, so we'll have to vote on that, but we are looking. The council was very open about adding a youth, and so we're looking at adding a youth, which we already have an applicant for, too, which is exciting.
Our vote was unanimous in favor. Thank you. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else.
Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for the commitment of serving on Atomo's Human Rights Commission. I know you guys are going to do great things.
Thank you.
And I did not have anything else to report at this time tonight.
The next thing on our agenda is I'll ask if anyone in tonight's audience has any items that are on our agenda tonight that they would like to speak to. Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move forward with the public hearing.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property known as 1531 Mabel Street, Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa, to Alyssa Welch.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Jake is going to present on this.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. The city accepted bids on the property until 2 o'clock PM, May 11, 2023. One bid was submitted by Alyssa Welch. She submitted the best bid in the amount of $300, and staff recommends accepting that bid.
Does Council have any questions for Jake? Since this is a public hearing, I'll ask if anyone in the audience has any questions, comments they'd like to make. If not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution number 902023, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property known as 1531 Mabel Street, Atomo, Iowa, to Alyssa Welch for the sum of $300. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 902023.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32122023, establishing solid waste fees for non-commercial establishments by repealing and replacing section 31 and 1/2 through 35 of the municipal code of the city of Atomo. Recommendation: Pass the second consideration of ordinance number 32122023.
Do we have a motion to approve that recommendation?
So moved.
Chris will take the roll. Oh, okay. Sorry about that, Zach. We'll let you speak first before we vote.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance does adopt new solid waste fees. The current ordinance expires July 1, 2023, and we typically address the fee on July 1. Because of the meeting not happening two weeks ago, the staff recommendation is to waive the third consideration and to pass the ordinance tonight in order to allow the fee to take effect by July 1. The new fee would be an increase of $2.82 per month, or 14.7%. Unfortunate to raise the fee to that extent, but it does account for some cost changes that we've had to have. One of those is the first increase in over 15 years for the tipping fee at the landfill, as well as the regular scheduled contract increase with Bridge City Sanitation, a fuel surcharge for Bridge City Sanitation, and administrative costs with processing the contract and the payments. Without change, the ordinance here will also increase the fee by another $1 on July 1 of 2024, which would be 4.5%. So a customer in 2023, 2024 would pay $264 per year for trash collection, which is up from $230, $230.16, and then that would be $276 next year. Trash collection fees are collected by the Atomo Water Works, and the city pays Atomo Water Works an administrative fee for processing those payments.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Waive the third consideration, pass and adopt ordinance number 32122023.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Zach, do you have anything else you want to say?
No, that's it, Your Honor.
Okay, then Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32132023, amending the code of ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 526 East Second from R4 to C2 in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa. Recommendation: Pass the third consideration and adopt ordinance number 32132023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third consideration for this ordinance. It would be the rezoning for the parking lot directly across from the high school at 526 East Second. This would facilitate the proposed athletics complex project, which is going to be bid this summer, or this fall. It also would alleviate an existing non-conforming issue with the way the parking lots used now. The Plan and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend the rezoning.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32142023, amending the code of ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 1508 Albia Road from C1 to C2 in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa. Recommendation: Pass the third consideration and adopt ordinance number 32142023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. This is the third consideration as well for this rezoning, which would change the property at 1508 Albia from C1 to C2. Have discussed a few elements of this at previous considerations, a couple things to raise. There was a resolution which adjusted the land use compatibility matrix in the future land use plan, and I do believe that was a good approach to bring Albia Road into a similar sort of land use arrangement as Church Street and some of the other types of districts that are similar, neighborhood commercial. This would be to permit, in this case, a short-term vehicle storage use for an impound lot, would be operating, would be parking operating and non-operating vehicles on hard surface for up to 30 days. That would include potentially storage of body-damaged vehicles behind screening, but no storage outdoors for greater than 30 days. The property owner is here if there's additional questions on the rezoning, and in this case, also, the Plan and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend the rezoning.
Council have any questions for Zach? Mr. Kirby, do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, if there's no other questions, then Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope? Authorize community development director to sign order form for Placer AI Location Services data program and agree to license agreement. Recommendation: Authorize community development director to sign order form for Placer AI Location Services data program and agree to license agreement, one-year subscription, $20,000. City's portion is $10,000 after John Deere Foundation and Greater Atomo Partners in Progress contributed $10,000.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
And Zach, I believe you're going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Placer AI is a set of GIS and data tools that's developed by Placer Labs that uses cellphone location service data, and we're excited about the opportunities we could have with this data. This proposal would allow us access to that data for any users within the city, any city staff, and anyone with this Atomo.us email address would be able to access the data. It uses a proprietary method to aggregate data that comes from anyone who has their cellphone set to share location services, and then they have an algorithm that they've developed over time that allows them to extrapolate from that about 30% of users into telling patterns for a larger group. They've used it and tested it in a number of ways. One thing that was interesting to us is that they use their data to measure how many people visit a Walmart store, and then they also have somebody physically go to a Walmart store and count everyone that goes through the door, and they found that the algorithm's accurate to about plus or minus 3%. So it does give us a pretty good indication of traffic and a few other things. We proposed it in the budget this year, and we were glad to receive a grant to help with the cost, brings the cost down from 20,000 to just 10,000, and there's a few use cases that we would expect that we can do with this. One is retail trade data. We do receive retail trade data from our partnership with Retail Strategies, but they're actually excited to see us potentially go in this direction, because we see a lot of tools that they don't have access to in this data as well, the custom geo-fencing that we can do, and the scope of data. We're able to draw around either a particular business, a retail district, and we can tell things such as trends over time, the demographics of customers, how many people visit that store within a certain period of time, how long they spend in the store, and there's a good formula for actually taking dwell time at different types of retail uses in order to estimate how much people spend, because usually if people spend about $35 at a bar, they spend about that much money. If they spend an hour at a different bar, you can see the difference between how much you expect that they're going to make for those different types of uses. We also are able to see where the customer came before they went and where they went right after, and also where customers live in terms of census tracts in the city and throughout the region and places that people come to visit. We also think there's a lot of value in terms of our special events, and we'd want to offer this data to folks that obtain special event permits with the city. Within three days of a special event, like the balloon races or a concert at Bridgeview, we'll be able to fence out the area where that event happened, and we can tell total attendance, where attendees came from, how long they stayed at the event, and we can share that data with event organizers so that they can kind of plan their events around that. We're also able to see traffic counts. One thing we've been frustrated with is the DOT only updates their traffic count data every few years, and we're really at the mercy of what happened to be the traffic pattern on the day that they were measuring how many people were driving. This data allows us to look at any given period of time in order to see how many users are on a road, and not just that, we can do it block by block, as opposed to just where the DOT happened to set up their measuring, and we can do directions. So we can tell northbound versus southbound, how many vehicles are on which side, and that's valuable data for putting together projects for businesses for measuring, you know, the flow of traffic, how many vehicles per day are on this corner as opposed to that corner. That sort of data is going to be valuable to us, and we're excited that we can share some of this with existing businesses. Being a partner with GoPip on this, that data can be available to members and to any business that is in that, in the city of Atomo, we can share some of the analytics that they wouldn't be able to obtain themselves, because they wouldn't be able to pay $20,000, but we're able to do that with the help of first the grant and also the scope of what we're able to do. We'll be happy to show off some of this stuff as we do future projects, and you'll be able to see more of what is in there, but we did show an example of a really basic report that was just run for Church Street, and that was included in the packet, and it showed us things like how many people visit the Church Street District in the course of one year, where they come from. It had a map that showed the wide area at which people come into the Church Street District and the total number of visits each of those people usually make, that sort of thing, so.
So this can all be done off of cell phones? You don't have to buy any extra equipment?
Right, we don't have to purchase anything. This is just something that Placer purchases from cellphone providers. They purchase this data, and it is run through a couple of different types of filters in order to protect privacy. One is that we don't see anything other than the census tract that people live in, so we wouldn't know who any individual person is. There are also certain types of things that they geo-fence out in order to protect additional privacy, types of healthcare, things where people wouldn't necessarily be comfortable having their location in any way, even if it's aggregated by census tract or things like that. We wouldn't be able, for example, to draw around women's healthcare facility and say how many people went there, from which census tracts. Those sorts of places are fenced out, and we're not able to use.
And if this proves to be very value-added to the city after this first year, can you get any kind of discount if you sign up for multiple-year subscriptions? There's always a year at a time.
Yeah, so it's always in increments of a year, but there is some, it sounds like there's some advantage to pricing to go further out. We also were looking at and kind of nibbling on the idea, and we were able to hear at a conference, the American Planning Association Chapter Conference last year, we heard a really good presentation from the Des Moines Area Downtown Group and how they've used the data for special events and things like that, and their recommendation was one of the things that kind of pushed us into looking deeper, so.
Does Council have any questions for Zach?
Yeah, I have a couple. So just kind of on what you said, Mayor, so sustainability, so this is for a year, and it sounds like it's going to provide some pretty substantial information, especially with traffic counts, because if I understand, certain businesses will only come with certain traffic counts, correct, in the area? Correct. Yeah. So sustainability, so what does that look like after year one? I heard you say Retail Strategies is interested in maybe taking this on for their business overall. Yeah, so one thing that I would love to see is that they might, while they watch us use the program, that they might just adopt it on their side, and maybe we get access through the relationship we have with them going forward. We're also going to be sharing kind of some of the results of this with GoPip and the John Deere Foundation, see if there might be interest in continuing that program for a little bit further into the future. I think especially GoPip's going to find value in the data that we can share with local businesses, because I think it'd be great for a locally-owned business to be able to have the same customer demographic data that the big chains get by default. They all pay for this sort of thing, so I think that'll be great for them, and so I think if their interest is continued, that'll help us to buy down the cost as well. Okay, thank you.
Council have any other questions for Zach?
I would just say, Zach, like, this all sounds great, and I'm really excited for this, and also sounds really scary at the same point, so. But, yeah, I appreciate you guys looking for something like this. I think this is going to put our city on another level as far as competing for businesses out there, so I'm really excited to see what you guys can bring with this. And I'll echo what has already been said, I really hope that we can find a way to make this a little more sustainable, where we can actually afford this a little bit, a little lower price later on. Thank you, Zach.
I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Purchase of parking lot light poles for the Troger Parking Lot Project. Recommendation: Approve the purchase of light poles and light fixtures for the Troger Parking Lot and Bridgeview Parking Lot Expansion Project totaling $16,901.28.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
And I believe, Phil, you're going to cover this item?
Yes. So during the design of the Troger Parking Lot and Bridgeview Parking Lot expansion, the concrete light pole bases and conduits were included in the construction plans. The thought was, though, that if we ordered the lights for those projects and had the crews do that in-house, that would reduce the purchase and installation cost. So quotes were requested. Two suppliers had submitted 3E and Crescent Electric. And of those two, 3E presented the best price at $16,901.28. And it's requested to go with that company to purchase those light poles, which will then be installed by staff.
Any questions from council for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution Number 92, 2023, approving the collective bargaining agreement with Atomo Police Union Teamsters Local Number 238 commencing on 7/1/23 through 6/30/2028. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 92, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I think our HR Director, Barb Cojo, is going to cover this.
Thank you, sir. So the contract that was presented to you is one that we had negotiated with the union, the police union. And just of the contract is really, we cleaned up a lot of language that was in there. Since our last contract, the police department went to 12-hour days. And so there were a lot of things that were still within that contract that were reflected of the eight-hour days. So that's the majority of the items that were changed within that contract. We incorporated a couple of MOUs that we had signed previously, and all of those changes were incorporated in there as well. We also, the wages that were in there, that information we were actually given from Gallagher prior to the negotiation of this. So we were able to take the recommendations that Gallagher had given to us actually going into that negotiation. We budgeted for those changes as far as wages go. So when we presented the budget to you all previously for 2024, we were aware of the salary increases, and that was already put into that budget. Once we did do the complete negotiation, we did realize that there's probably about $12,000 that we had not budgeted for. But we do feel, after talking with the finance department, that that is something that we'll be able to make up for.
Does council have any questions for Barb?
I do. So just kind of from that point. And I, so from our current financial standings, what is the reserve ratio based on this? So for example, does it align with what council approved for the budget? Or does it create a variance or a significant variance? And I think you just answered, kind of answered that.
I'd have to turn that over to Wasi, sorry.
I think since the budget numbers were already part of the budget that we presented to you, so just $12,000, I don't think so that will make a huge difference in the ratio because $12,000 is a very immaterial amount compared to when we talk about the millions of dollars. So I don't think it will have any impact.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council for Barb? Police Chief Farrington, do you have anything you'd like to say? I know he doesn't know I was going to ask this. And if you don't have anything you want to say, that's fine. I just thought I'd ask you.
I'd say, both on the city side and the union side, it was a very amicable, very good negotiation. I had union stewards on the department that said that city staff was excellent. They liked the process, and it appears to be very fair.
That's what I was hoping you'd say. Just for the record. Thank you for your positive comment.
Mayor, I do have one more question. So just, so with the creation of a salary structure that will match up what our, like, what we learned through our works session last week, too? Like, it'll meet the Gallagher recommendations?
Yeah, so what we did, when we did the negotiation, we didn't have the salary structure very specifically, but we did have the initial, like, the midpoint and the minimum and the maximum. And so when we went to the negotiation with the, with the union, those are within like a dollar or two of each other. So we have, we can slot our police officers and our dispatchers onto that schedule. They still have, the union contract itself has its own schedule now because that was negotiated prior to this coming done. But if we were to ever move away from what is in this union contract, it will line up very, very well with what is on the total salary schedule for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Barb? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution Number 93, 2023, approving updates to personnel policy. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 93, 2023.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Okay, Barb.
Thank you. So this would be updating our current personnel policy with four different items on there. The staff summary does have those broken out, which essentially this is just updating a couple of, some of the verbiage that's in there. The first one talks about general provisions, just talking that the personnel policies and handbooks do not and cannot address every single situation. The Article III, updating the equal employment opportunity, we added in there who to contact for more information regarding this. And then in the Article 10 under benefits, under health and life insurance, we had something in all of our other parts about review the policy and plan documents for further information. We just did not have that under the health and life insurance. And then we also added, under the benefits section for health insurance, part of the insurance audit that we had completed last year, where we went through and validated relationships and making sure that we had correct documentation. We have a document for that, but we just specifically added that into the personnel policy so that way there was no question as to what and why we were requiring that.
Does council have any questions for Barb?
I do. Okay, so regarding this specific part, the part you added about any employee who is eligible for insurance, that piece, what is the ACA requirement for approving employee and family eligibility? And I guess, is there any standard that has to be applied?
There's not the ACA, there's not really the rule under the ACA, but it is more based upon your plan document and your company documents and what your company or organization decides that that is what they are going to go for.
And how did we decide the documents that we were going to use to determine the eligibility?
So we have a third-party administrator, which used to be Mark J. Becker and Associates, and they have since been bought out by Gallagher. And so we worked with them to identify a company that would do the audit. And within that audit, this is the company out of Indiana that we had used, and this was something that they do all of the time. And so what they did, working with our third-party administrator, they took our plan documents that we have since we are a self-funded plan and said, okay, based on this, these are the documents that you would see. This is what we see most commonly, or what federal laws are regarding marriage or tax filing status or dependents or things like that. And so again, this is something that the audit firm has used for many, many years and in many different industries, and then working with that third-party administrator and with what our current plans are.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for Barb? And it's my understanding all employees have access to the personnel policies and procedures through UKG, correct?
Correct. It's on, it's through UKG, and it is also available on our website. So even our citizens have access to that. And what we have started doing is anytime we make any of these changes, we actually highlight that section in the personnel policy to note that that was a change that has been made since the last version.
I just want to say I appreciate your diligence and really trying hard to make sure that our personnel policies and procedures are current and accurate. Because I know sometimes historically in the past, I don't know if that was always the case. And I know you work very hard to make sure that we've got current personnel policies and procedures so that everybody is aware and can access them. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 94, 2023, awarding the contract for demolition of the condemned property at 1054 and 1056 Tuttle to environmental edge of Atomo, Iowa in the amount of $7,200. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 94, 2023.
Move the recommendation that's presented.
Second.
Okay, oh, Jake.
Thank you, Mayor. Bids for this project were accepted until 2 o'clock on May 18th. Four demolition bids were received. Dustin Smith had the lowest bid in the amount of $7,200 for demolition. The staff recommends awarding him the contract. And this was the house that our fire department got to train in and burn down, so.
Does council have any questions for Jake? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution Number 95, 2023, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 301 North Graves to Dan Larson of Atomo, Iowa for $6,800 for asbestos removal and $18,000 for demolition, with the total being $24,800. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 95, 2023.
Move the recommendation that's presented.
Second.
Okay, Jake.
All right, thank you. Like the last one, bids were accepted until 2 o'clock on May 18th. We got three asbestos bids and three demolition bids. Dan Larson submitted the best bid in the amount of $8,000 for asbestos and $18,000 for demolition. The staff recommends awarding him this contract.
Does council have any questions regarding this issue for Jake? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution Number 99, 2023, approving the final plat of Kristner's first subdivision in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 99, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation that's presented.
Mr. Simonson, you're going to take this one.
Yes, this is a 9.4-acre, four-lot contiguous area to be subdivided into four new lots. Currently, the block is divided. If you look at the subdivision document, similar to the two blocks on either side, the lots face east and west. And they would face toward, I believe that's, yeah, Oak Street and North Fellows. Those two sections of Oak Street and North Fellows are basically gravel alleys. They're not full streets. And so in order to build new homes there, the best arrangement for the owner was to re-divide them so that the lots face north and south in the arrangement that's shown on the document. And then they have frontage on Lincoln and East Court. So this subdivision does allow for the construction of four new single-family homes, one of which is already under permit, by rearranging those lots in that way. The Plan and Zoning Commission did review the preliminary and final plat and recommends adopting the final plat.
Would this be like moderate to upper housing or low-income housing or?
So in this case, I believe they're just going to be regular market-rate, single-family homes. The property owner, as you can maybe guess by the name of the subdivision, is Kristner Development or Contracting, whatever the LLC that owns the properties. But their plan is to build there. I think they might have some partnerships with some other things involved in that, but I believe the program's for market-rate, single-family.
Does council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution Number 100, 2023, accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the Atomo Campground Shower House and Office Building Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 100, 2023.
Move the recommendation that's presented.
Second.
Okay, and Jean, I believe you're going to cover this.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The Atomo Park Campground Office and Shower House Project is now complete, and the 5% retainage payment of $29,742.10 can be made to the contractor, which is RG Construction of Atomo. The total cost of this project with RG Construction was $594,842. Final pay request from RG Construction is attached, as well as the certificate of project completion from Willett Hoffman.
Does council have any questions for Jean? I guess the comment I'd have is, I've heard a lot of positive comments from people that use the campgrounds. They're very appreciative and excited about the new shower house. And is the old shower house still going to continue to be in operation? That's a question they keep asking.
We're going to leave it up for the rest of the year for sure. And I think this fall, I'm going to bring it to the park board and let them discuss what to do with it. If we have another rag ride next year, for example, it could be coming handy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Jean, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution Number 101, 2023, approving a three-year School Resource Officer Agreement between the City of Atomo and the Atomo Community School District. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 101, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation that's presented.
Second.
And I believe Phil's going to cover this.
I will. I was thinking the police chief, we'll have to have him do this in the future. But the last time around, three years ago, I had done this, and so presented it again. Right now, we have a program, and in specifics of the program, we can defer to Police Chief. But with, we have a relationship with the Atomo School District that's been going on for quite some time. And it's a three-year agreement to update that, to maintain the school resource officers. There's been a couple of minor changes working with the school district administration. I think in the past, we had two at the high school and one at Evans. And there's five, six elementary buildings in addition to that. And so the thought was that they'd be able to have some flexibility as a district with where the officers would be able to report out of. The caveat to that is wherever that is needs to be known, and the police department has to sign off that it's a secured office where they'd be operating out of for whatever period of time. It might be a month at a time, whatever that case is. And it's coordination between the department and the district for what the needs are throughout the, the school district, excuse me, school district and what they have. This agreement is also a little bit different as it kind of helps clarify what that role of the school resource officer is, and not only for the officer, but also for the district. You know, you hear, there are many school districts across the nation that are maybe moving away from programs like this. Still think there's a lot of benefit to having this. And this, laying this out this way, I think helps define that. School resource officer is not there to, you know, issue out school discipline. They're not there to, they're there to assist and to help provide a safe, secure learning environment for the students and a safe and secure environment for the staff and the teachers. You know, so the coordinated efforts between the district and the school, between the district and the police department is what this strives to do.
So the new agreement is going to provide more flexibility on where these resource officers can be housed out of. And that could possibly change from one year to the next during the next three-year contract, as long as the police department is agreeable with those locations?
Yeah, they are still employees of the city. They're still, you know, if there is a all-call, all-hands-on-deck type call, they are able to break away, respond to what's needed in the city. So they're still primarily that. However, they become part of the administrative team for the school district as well to help. And I believe the school district gets funding as well for the safe, secure programs. They become part of that team. And like I said, to help clarify the role so that the officer that's there knows what their responsibilities are, and then the school staff and district know what their responsibilities are, it's more defined in this than it has been in past agreements.
And just for the benefit of the public, the school district does pay 50% of these three officers' salaries, correct?
Yes, so, I mean, I think they get a little bit more time than that on a 50-50 split. But what is being requested is 50% of the actual cost of those officers. We have it outlined in here for the current officers in that role. If somebody were to roll out of that detail and someone else rolled in at a lesser amount, they'd be 50% of that. So that it can be flexible on what the actual cost is, but it's to answer your question, 50% of what those actual costs are.
I just wanted to make sure the public understood it really is a partnership between the Atomo Community School District and the Atomo Police Department.
Yes, and the school district had signed off on this last week. He gave a copy of the signed agreement from their side.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
So I do. So I understand the flexibility of an officer, especially with like the middle school, and now we have the new high school. So having, you know, the flexibility there and with some changes going on with the middle school, too. But elementary, I guess I question that a little bit, too, for why we would need a resource officer in an elementary school.
Go ahead.
Some of the changes that the Atomo School District makes, they're looking at potentially having up to 750 students at that. They're also adding an older age to that. If, you know, at... If, you know, at, at the very onset of or at the very worst tragedy that we can experience. Unfortunately, statistics show us that elementary schools are what's considered a soft target for active shooters. So having the ability to have that physical deterrent there and that resource. But again, the main mission is not to arrest our kids that are going to school. It's there to be. We're trying to move this forward into maybe more actual activity and participation in lecture or classroom or training, whether that be actually in the classroom with students and/or their faculty and staff, such as de-escalation and those other types of skills that we get trained in, but maybe sometimes the, the teachers and faculty don't. So just again, looking at that partnership, I think they feel that in the past, we've been pretty, pretty stagnant in position that, you know, the high school is where a lot of criminal activity could take place if it's going to. But the school district feels that there are times, whether it be an outside influence or internal influence within that grade school, they would like to have, and it may not be a situation where the officer is positioned there all day. Maybe they're there for the morning hours and then they move on back to the high school or Evans or something like that. Flexibility.
Yeah, and I also appreciate something that you said too, kind of moving away from this thought of a resource officer being there for that kind of presence of authority and moving more into education because I think education is where, is a valuable piece for all school districts. So I, I am glad to hear that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I say, just to piggyback on that, so you have the, the district helping to determine where those needs are. So if they're part of the safety team, it may be, like I said, training of, of staff that are in the various schools. I don't know, they may be there a few days or a week, if that's the case, to get through training and those things, to determine if there are any soft points or threats or anything within a building that they can be determined to help them with what needs to be done as far as locking down. They also think that, that are in here, searches in school or on school property should be done by school officials. An SRO may be asked to assist with that, but they're not going in and searching people's lockers and doing all of that. It becomes a whole legal issue on, on top of other things. The other thing too is like, it says, unless there's a real and immediate threat to students or, or the school staff or public safety incidents, they're not there to arrest people. They're not to, in fact, it kind of help, it hinders that relationship between students and, and the officer if they're seen as that type of authority figure. And being in elementary, they're hopefully building some positive relationships between the officers and the students. So there's a number of things where it can be beneficial as well.
And I appreciate the clarification about like the soft points too, especially if we're going to be evaluating what the new school's coming up to. We probably don't. The school probably doesn't have an idea of what those are gonna look like. And again, I focus on the education piece. I think that's an extremely important piece for our district and our officers. Thank you.
Does any other counsel have any questions, comments?
I have two questions for you. So you mentioned training. Do these SROs go through extensive or more training to be able to work with these kids and get that education in?
Yeah, and then there's actual annual too. They just got back from the SRO Annual Conference, so they'd normally go to SRO school. We've, a number of the SROs have actually been through the DARE training, which is fairly difficult and extensive training in and of itself, believe it or not. And then annually, they go to conferences, any webinars, online training, they'll get updated on that along with, such as our CIP training for that critical interviewing process too. They, they participate in that.
And another question I have for you, so we kind of briefly mentioned about other schools are kind of going away from SROs. Have you guys looked at a process to help our school system maybe eventually move away from having an officer in school and move into more of a plainclothes person or something like that rather than also?
We, I guess I have not particularly approached them about that topic. I mean, that's something that the school district, if they determine if you're meeting like a private entity like security and stuff, they, they have discussed, or they actually brought up a plainclothes officer in the building. I, I'm against that adamantly, and, and the reason really for that, police officer has a lot of equipment on their belt. And when you take a plainclothes officer and you cover up that equipment, one, it's harder to get to. We train to retrieve certain items without even looking off of our belt. You can lose that physical deterrent, such as, as I said, if, if somebody's walking around in a suit jacket. The so-called bad guy may not even view them as a police officer, so you, you lose that deterrence right there. Secondly, it becomes much more difficult to carry all that equipment and the ballistic vest. And the last thing I want to do is put an officer in a situation where the only possible force tool they have is a handgun, which is deadly force, and we don't want that. We want them to have the capability, have those lesser uses of force if they need to apply those. However, I have also told them that I am absolutely open to, just like the warm weather uniform I'm wearing today, if they want to come up with, you know, and I'm working with Superintendent McCloskey now on possibly a red polo with khaki. So to support that administrative staff, being part of more of the school colors. We've also discussed if, if they want to come up with even a different style of arm patch. Maybe the officer, SRO wears the traditional PD patch on the right arm. And if they come up with a be the best SRO kind of patch or bulldog patch, I would allow them to put that on the left seat.
You work pretty closely with their, the police officers, work pretty closely with the therapeutic team too, the counselors, and then the other programs in the community to kind of offset so that there's resources provided. So again, so you're not, you're more of a trainer educator instead of the deterrent.
Absolutely. And another way they've, they've become more involved is, you know, historically, the SRO's offices have always been in a different part of the building than, and not close to where those counselors are, not close to where the principals or assistant principals are. And in part of the renovation, those SROs, their offices are actually going to be implanted with those administrative offices to create that better communication, better collaboration between their administrative staff and the service.
And I think overall, just appreciating that you guys will be part of the restructuring that's gonna be happening here in town. So I think that's very important and it's gonna be very essential that the students see that as well. So I appreciate that.
Any other comments for either Phil or Police Chief Harrington? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope? Resolution number one oh two, twenty twenty three, approve change order number two for the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division One, East of Iowa Avenue Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one oh two, twenty twenty three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, and I believe Phil's gonna cover this.
Yeah, so change order number two provides compensation to the contractor for relocating the existing water main at the intersection of Fourth Street and Van Buren Avenue and the intersection of Foster Avenue and the alley. Change order number two increases the contract amount by thirteen thousand, sixty dollars and seven cents. That puts the new contract sum at three million, one hundred, sixty two thousand, eight hundred, fifteen dollars and seven cents. We'd initially budgeted three million dollars for that, but this would be coming out of the, the CIP funding. And road use will take over the, the balance.
Does counsel have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution number one oh three, twenty twenty three, approve Iowa Department of Transportation STBG swap application for the North Court Reconstruction Project and authorize the mayor to sign. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one oh three, twenty twenty three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Natalie, Phil, you're gonna cover this item as well.
Yeah, so this Iowa Department of Transportation STBG swap application is for funding for full depth, full width reconstruction of North Court Street, area from Park Avenue to a hundred linear feet north of Van Ness Avenue. Project includes replacement of sanitary sewer and installation of a separate storm sewer. Two new features would include the installation of the busted and drop off lane and an eight foot multi-use trail as detailed in our master trail system plan. Federal grant funds are available annually to the city of Atumwa and administered, administered by Area Fifteen Regional Planning Affiliation, members for use on roadway improvement projects. Fund for projects through this program require a twenty percent local match. That's an eighty twenty program. Project would be programmed for a twenty twenty seven construction season. The design would start in the twenty four, twenty five year. Local match would be allocated from future funds and include any combination of CIP bond issues if needed in the future. Road use, local option sales and service tax, or sewer revenue. Project is estimated to be costing about three point two million, looking at two point five six of that coming from the STBG and six hundred, forty one thousand coming from the local funds. That's the twenty percent of that. And so tonight, you'd be looking at just completing the application for that two and a half million dollars towards this project. It's a future project looking at being designed in the fiscal year twenty five, construction fiscal year twenty seven.
Counselor have any questions for Phil?
Yes, how will this affect the cemetery? Will it affect them in any way?
I mean, during construction, the one driveway would, would not be accessible, but I think we still have other access into the cemetery?
Yeah, read effort.
Thank you.
So I got a couple of questions for you, Phil. So did they not just replace the sanitary sewer on that road?
Not in that stretch.
Not in that stretch, okay.
Yeah, this is, the, the, the stretch was from Park Avenue going north to.
From Yamako up to pass the school, okay.
There was some water projects that were done crossing North Court.
Okay, okay. And then, so there, I know this is in the plan. I just want to detail it. It says an eight foot multi-use trail is detailed in the city master trail system plan. Would this run along the road then, or how would this trail work?
You know, I did not look at that specific. I, I believe so. I think it is in coordination with that busted and drop off. The school district approached us about cutting into the roadway there and, or in their parking lot and having a better drop off spot for students, make it a little more safer, secure for those that are going to Horace Mann there. That's part of what is being requested here in the design. And I don't remember which way the trail was running specifically.
Okay, I mean, I just was, was wondering about that because, I mean, wouldn't that be considered just like, wouldn't the sidewalk work for like a trail?
I think it'll be like a lot of those, that those year project included the wider sidewalk on one side, it's a little bit of a trail.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Appreciate it.
It says it'd be an eight foot wide.
Yep.
Does counsel have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution number one oh four, twenty twenty three, awarding a five year agreement to Bergen KDV LTD for audit services for the city of Atumwa for fiscal year twenty three to fiscal year twenty seven. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number one oh four, twenty twenty three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
And I believe Wassim's gonna handle this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The city of Atumwa issued an RFP to perform its annual financial audit. The RFP was closed at three P M. on June twelfth, twenty twenty three. We received only one proposal for this purpose. The proposal is from Bergen KDV Limited in Des Moines in the amount of forty two thousand, nine hundred, forty five thousand dollars, forty seven, five hundred, forty seven thousand, five hundred, fifty thousand dollars and fifty two thousand, five hundred respectively for next five years. The copy of the proposal is attached in the, in the package that you have.
A question that I've got is how does this cost roughly compare with who the city's used in the past?
I ran the last two fiscal years and in fiscal twenty twenty two, which ended on June thirtieth of last year, we paid little over forty thousand dollars. And the year before, we paid thirty three thousand, eight hundred, fifty thousand dollars. And keep in mind that the, the audit firm we used in past, they were local.
Right.
No travel costs and all of those things.
Anderson Markin.
Yeah, and these people will come from out of town, so there is extra travel costs.
Does counsel have any questions for Wassim? Okay, if not, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Okay, this is the part of our council meeting where I ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any item that's not on our agenda tonight. John? You want to come up to the microphone and, and state your name and address, please?
John Fenner, four oh seven Elmdale Avenue, Atumwa, Iowa. I would like to read the introduction of the statement that was in those pamphlets. I think it's the work that was put into those pamphlets by the committee, by our group. Have a lot of, lot of thoughts that were going in there. I think, I think they deserve to be read, if you don't mind. I should have read it earlier. We were going around and I missed it.
Go ahead.
Okay. As members of the Atumwa Human Rights Commission, we have become increasingly concerned about what we are perceived to be a growing wave of intolerance throughout the United States. Redic and exclusion and bigotry aimed at various groups have become more common and seemingly unacceptable or acceptable in both public and political speech. Numerous states, including Iowa, have passed laws restricting the rights of some minority groups. School curricula has been altered to force the teaching of a sanitized version of our nation's history. Books, even classics are, even classics are being banned in the schools. We believe that these trends and actions are both regrettable and alarming. Therefore, our commission has drafted the following statement in order to state our commitment to the human rights of all people. That statement is the Human Rights Commission is devoted to creating an environment that fosters advocacy and a mutual respect for all offenders in Atumwa. In so doing, we unequivocally reject all forms of intolerance and marginalization.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is mayor, city council report or any kind of communications. I don't really have anything other than I was pleased with the turnout that the Juneteenth celebration had in Central Park yesterday. I think it was a, a good community event. There were several people that attended throughout the day. And I think here again, it's just another way that Atumwa can recognize and celebrate our, our wide amount of diversity that we have in our community. So I think the planning committee did a good job of planning the event. It was a larger event this year than the first two years that they tried to hold it. So I think it was a well-attended event. Does anybody have any other comments that they want to make?
I do. Today, I just want to give accolades to J D. And everyone else at the airport for the Air Race Classic that occurred today. The mayor and I were able to stop out there today and it was a pretty phenomenal event. A lot of fun seeing the planes and the female pilots come in and we just had a really great time. It was well done, well prepared. And just accolades to the, to the team out at the airport.
Now, this was, Atumwa was their second stop on this race that started this morning in North Dakota. And they stopped in Atumwa and then ultimately, in the next two days, they end up south of Miami, Florida. So I think Atumwa has maybe had them come through one other time several years back, but it was a fun event and it was open to the public. And there were several people that was there to see the planes come in and people could talk to the pilots and you couldn't go out and look at the planes, but at least you could see them out there on the runway. So it was, it was very interesting. I, I thoroughly enjoyed it too. So we want to continue to try and do. So we want to continue to try and do things to increase the visibility of our airport in Atumwa. I think we have a wonderful airport, and we're trying to continue to look at different ways that we can increase their revenue and market the airport. We're also hopeful that maybe at some point in the future, we could get some commercial flights to start coming in and out of the Atumwa Airport again. So stay tuned for more developments on our airport. Any other comments or announcements any of the council would like to make? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's city council meeting?
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Counselor Member Galloway?
Yes.
Counselor Member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counselor Member Hull?
Yes.
Counselor Member Pope?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending tonight's Board of Health meeting and the Atumwa City Council meeting.